Call the meeting to order.
Nichols, Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
First order of business is approval of the minutes from June 25th, 2012, regular meeting.
Move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Under new business this evening, we have a resolution, Bill number 2012-42, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Audrain County Historical Society for requested funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax, and this is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for the 2012 Walk Back in Time Festival. To cover the details of the amount, we will turn to Roger Hanks.
Good evening. The Tourism Commission met on June 26th and reviewed a funding request from the Audrain County Historical Society in the amount of $7,070 for purposes of offsetting costs associated to advertising the 2012 Walk Back in Time, which is scheduled to be held the last week of September, September 28th through the 30th. As council is aware, the event has been very well attended and draws people into Mexico from numerous other cities and states. The tourism tax supported the event in the amount of $6,020 in 2011 and has supported the event as high as $7,500 in the past. Staff recommends that council concur with the Mexico Tourism Commission's recommendation to fund the $7,070 and proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Suppose we have enough money in the tourism tax fund to cover this?
We do.
Is that, is that fund keeping up with what we had budgeted, or is it?
We had budgeted to bring in approximately $42,000 this fiscal year. We are a little bit behind that schedule. We're looking at probably $41,000 to $41,500. I mean, it's not a large amount, but the commission has adjusted their funding to the requesters accordingly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move for reading of Bill number 2012-42.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-42, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Audrain County Historical Society for requested funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax, whereas the Mexico Tourism Commission reviewed an application from the Audrain County Historical Society, whereas the Mexico Tourism Commission recommends to city council the Audrain County Historical Society be allowed to receive tourism funding for their tourism advertising campaign. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, that the city manager be authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mexico with the Audrain County Historical Society for tourism funding. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill number 2012-42.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, new business ordinance, this evening, we have a bill number 2012-43. Before I read that, do I want to have Bruce make some comments?
Yes, Your Honor, this is, is a lease for property at the airport to build a private hangar. However, as of today, the folks that were wishing to do the lease had some additional changes to the lease, and we'd like to have the opportunity to review those before we submit this, so we would like to pull this this evening, and we'll bring them back to you in two weeks once we have the rest of, all the changes incorporated.
Okay. And we will move on to our next bill. Bill number 2012-44, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 15, Sidewalk Cafe, Section 6, 454, hours of operation, and Section 6, 455, length of license of the code of the City of Mexico. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, a year ago, you had passed an ordinance permitting sidewalk cafes. In the last month, we've taken comment on proposed changes to the ordinance, and we will turn to Rita Jackson to cover those changes and what you have directed us to bring forth to you to consider for amendments to this ordinance.
In July 2011, council passed an ordinance permitting licensing of sidewalk cafes. At the May 29th, 2012 council meeting, staff presented an overview and update of the ordinance, and public input was solicited from downtown merchants. Staff presented the following recommendations to council at the June 29th, 2012 meeting. Section 6-454, hours of operation. The City of Mexico shall establish the hours of operation and any other restrictions, limitations, et cetera, it deems appropriate. The hours of operation shall be from 11 o'clock a.m. to 10 o'clock p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 1 o'clock to 6 o'clock p.m. on Sunday. Current code allows the hours of operation to 9 o'clock p.m. Monday through Saturday. Section 6-455, length of license. Licenses shall apply each year for the sidewalk cafe license. The sidewalk cafe license is an annual license with no limitations on the time of year for the use of the public space. Current codes allow that this be a temporary permit for a season from May 1st through October 31st each year. As we have reported in previous meetings, currently, the city only has one sidewalk cafe, which is Wine on Washington, and to date, we've had no problems with that particular license. Staff recommends that council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance amending sidewalk cafe licenses.
So if we read, if I'm reading this correctly, and the changes we made, that we've increased it by one hour, Monday through Saturday, from 9:00 to 10:00 p.m., and we've made it an annual license, so that if it's a nice day in December and they want to use the sidewalk cafe, they can?
Yes.
And that's basically the two changes?
Yes.
I move for reading of Bill number 2012-44.
Second.
By title only.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-44, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 15, Sidewalk Cafes, Section 6-454, hours of operation, and Section 6-455, length of license of the code of the City of Mexico. I move for second reading of Bill number 2012-44.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-44, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 15, Sidewalk Cafes, Section 6-454, hours of operation, and Section 6-455, length of license of the code of the City of Mexico. I move for passage of Bill number 2012-44.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for Bill number 2012-45, and I would like to have our city attorney, Lou, come up and talk first before we go through the reading of that. Hopefully, we're doing this correctly.
So when we raise this up, we're going to start all the feedback again? Bruce called me, I think probably about 10 days ago, and asked about a, for lack of a better term, called a burning ban within the City of Mexico, because one had been declared out in the Little Dixie Fire Protection District by the chief of the fire district. We honestly don't have, at the present time, in our city code, the ability to do that. We do, we can issue advisories, we ban the use of fireworks, but we do permit burning of bushes, trees, leaves, tree limbs, that type of thing. That's in Section 12-5 of the city code. So I did some research, and we found, for lack of a better term, I think everybody would refer to it as the, quote, "police power" and "city manager form of government," third-class cities. If you would like to do that, we can issue a ban. And I drafted the ordinance, sent it over to Bruce, and I thought the way to go about doing it was to have a recommendation in writing from the director of public safety that due to extreme weather conditions, drought, that type of thing, allow the chief to make a recommendation to the city manager. And if he accepted that, he then could enter the ban order for a specific period of time. That would be in writing, it would become part of the city records, it would be filed with the city clerk, so you'd have an official order. And frankly, we would need that to be able to prosecute someone for violating that in municipal court. So that is what we are recommending to you. We put together an amendment this afternoon to make it more specific, and we have a little problem with the city code, and I'll address that in just a second. But this would add a new paragraph, Paragraph C, to Section 12-5. And where you find that, frankly, is when you think of burning bans, I'm not sure everybody thinks of solid waste and the solid waste ordinance, but that's where this is. And 12.5 is prohibited practices, and it deals with how you dispose of solid waste, and subparagraph B of 12-5 is the, what is permitted to be burned. So what we would do is add a new Paragraph 6, which would set forth what I just outlined for you. Now, that is not what was published and appeared in the agenda of last Thursday and Friday, so if you would like to do that this evening, my suggestion would be that you read this once, accept the portion in yellow as an amendment, then read it once, and then we could come back in two weeks and pass it finally. Or if you have some questions or suggestions, I'd sure be happy to hear them. The other thing I'd like to point out for you, we're starting to have a problem with the city code, and frankly, that is, where do we put things? From time to time, it has probably been 10 or 12 years where we recodify matters. But to give an example, in Chapter 11, and these things normally go very logically, Chapter 11 is planning and development. 11-1 to 11-5, that talks about subdivision of land, zoning, et cetera. Then we came in with a new section. Instead of 11-5, we have 11.5. If you can distinguish the difference between that, you're doing very good. And that deals with social services, and in particular, the home emergency repair program. Now, what that has to do with the rest of Chapter 11, we needed a place to put it, so we put it there, okay? The same thing with Chapter 12. Chapter 12 deals with solid waste, refuse, how we handle all of that. We had to have a place to put stormwater, and stormwater limits, stormwater requirements. So if you can distinguish between 12-5, which is the burning ordinance, and 12.5, which is stormwater runoff, good for you. But, you know, it's starting to get pretty tough to make all those subtle distinctions. So at some point, we really need, and it's not something, there are people who do this, and when you meet these people, they're very interesting people. But, you know, when you go to law school, you used to think of people with the eye shades, or the old jeweler that would repair watches with an eye shade. That's what codifiers are. And they take all your ordinances, they update them, they put them all together. This ordinance I drafted was done with the intent of having a codifier do it, because he would make it fit right in the section where we need it. But I appreciate the fact we're going to be a little more specific. So that's a general problem we're, we're starting to have with our code, and I just want to bring that to your attention. So we have an 11-5, we have an 11.5, we have a 12-5, we have a 12.5. What we really ought to have probably is a 12-500 and 11-500 to make this all sequential, make it easier to find. But that's not the way we got it right now. So I've said enough about that, so let me get back to burning, and be glad to answer any questions anybody has about them.
So, that was a week, 10 days ago, whatever, we did issue a, we issued a statement saying we were banning burning.
That was unfortunate. I think, I think we thought that we had a power, we assumed we had the same power that rural fire chief has. We don't, honestly. We have to have that passed in the city code. What we do have, frankly, is, and a lot of people don't know this, we have some criminal prosecution abilities. If you would set off fireworks negligently and start a fire, that's a misdemeanor. If you would do it intentionally, and it would cause damage to a home, that's a felony. So we looked at those things, and we made sure public safety knew about them, and that's when we changed it to an advisory. We thought it would be more appropriate to handle it that way. But I think, you know, we need to stay within what we can do, and I think we kind of got some bad information, and we corrected that.
I wasn't, I mean, yeah, we all make mistakes. I wasn't saying it to point that out. I was just, did we have anybody, do we have, do we issue any tickets or anything? Did you know of?
That's not in mind, but I'll...
I'm saying, did we get ourselves on the, behind there?
No, 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 no. We wouldn't, if, if we make a mistake, we go out and say it and correct it. So that's, it didn't get to that stage. We, we got to that pretty quick.
Lou, how is the determination made? What, what are the criteria that, by which that can be done?
Well, it takes a recommendation of the Department of Public Safety. I purposely did not put in there something like 30 days in a row without rain, or a certain tender point. I think we just have to rely on, you know, we call it education, training, and experience. And we have a safeguard in that it's a recommendation made by the Department of Public Safety to the city manager, and then he acts upon it, and then it has to be renewed. It's not something that's just continually there. To give you an example, probably Chief Rocket would have to help me, but I would suspect in all the counties adjoining us, in the rural fire districts, there are probably ban, burn banning orders in place right now. So that's, you know, happened pretty a lot due to the drought. I noticed that Jeff City last night had over an inch of rain, Sedia had no rain, Columbia had no rain, Leguerozarks had an inch and a half. Some parts of Mexico had rain yesterday, some parts did not. So it's, it's really a judgment call, Dan. It's nothing that you can put down hard and fast. Hasn't rained for 20 days, put a ban in place.
I will say, I appreciate that safeguard that you, excuse me, that you've built in, because one of the things that came to mind was the possibility of someone getting power-hungry or being approached by someone and influenced by someone. For instance, we had people come and talk wanting us to ban burning of leaves. Well, the possibility might be that they would influence the powers that be to, to call for a burning ban at a time when it wasn't really necessary, and people wanted to burn their leaves, and then they couldn't. And but I appreciate the safeguard that's built in.
Well, it's, it's, it's a real tricky problem that you have. You know, for instance, if, if we would have a storm, let's say we'd have a windstorm, we wouldn't have rain, we'd have a lot of limbs down. People would want to put those, frankly, in the drainage ditches and burn them like they burn leaves. That would not be good today, tomorrow, or next week. So we got to have some discretion, make sure we do what's in the, that's why we have the police power, to do what's in the general interest of the public as a whole, not as opposed to an individual.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I just bring it out.
So technically, what do we have to read tonight?
It would be a motion to read Bill number 2012-45, as amended, give it first reading, and then not give it second reading and passage until your meeting two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
And the amendment is, the yellow highlighted, that beginning section for Section 1, says Section 12.5 is amended to add new Paragraph C, which shall read as follows.
So, I guess we'll go ahead then, unless you have another question? Okay, I'm going to get the bill on the floor. Actually, the next item on the agenda is Bill number 2012-45, and it's, Section 12.5 is amended to add a new Paragraph C, which shall read as follows, and it's up for first reading by title only. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think you need a second.
Second.
Well, he's going to actually do that.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds? Yes.
Bill number 2012-45, an ordinance authorizing the city manager upon the recommendation of the chief of public safety to ban the burning of garbage, trash, leaves, yard rakings, cuttings from trees, trees and bushes during periods of dry weather, which result in an increased fire hazard and a danger to the public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Under other business this evening, we have a staff report, purchase of fire protective equipment for the public safety department.
Yes, Your Honor, we, we advertised for bids. We have received three different bids here, and to cover the details, I will turn to Chief Rocket and report what she has gotten.
This is to finish up our purchase of replacing everyone's bunker gear that we started last year, and we stretched our money as far as we could. We had a few people that didn't get fired, new fire gear last year. We rebid again, and Banner still comes in with the, with the lowest bid. I think it's just a few dollars more than what we paid for last year, but that will finish up everybody in bunker gear.
Just to refresh my memory, what is bunker gear?
I'm sorry, the coats and pants, firefighters' coats and pants.
How many volunteers do we have now?
Eight, same as we've had for, and I think it's the same eight we've had for a long, long time. But they, we replaced their stuff in the first wave. This second wave are the people that didn't probably use it as much.
It's very, very critical that this stuff be replaced periodically. I assume we need a motion?
Yes.
I would move to purchase the additional fire gear from Banner Fire Equipment for the amount of $12,840.
Second. Everybody needs a second.
Well, was it this, this 12? Oh, okay, I got it, got you. Thank you.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have appointment to various boards and commissions. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, I think with your permission, that it might make the most sense to handle these individually, instead of trying to group too many of them together.
Right.
Okay. So we start with the library board, and this is a, is to be filled by city council by code. Bill Maloney's term expires here July of 12. He is not eligible for reappointment, and you did receive an application from Bob Finlin to, for a three-year term on the board.
Your Honor, I would move to appoint Robert Finlin to the Mexico Audrain Library Board.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Okay. And I will point out on each of these, we did have advertisements and, and applications, and the applications are, are attached. 21st Century Fund, Bill Maloney, Laura Williams, term expires in August. Both have expressed interest in reappointment and would consider reappointment, and we did not receive any other applications for that board. And this also is a council point.
Move to appoint Bill Maloney and Laura Williams to the 21st Century Fund Board.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Planning and zoning commission, this is also as a council appointment. The terms of Robert Marty, Ralph Mika, Kyle Cone. Terms are, expire in July of 12. All three have expressed interest in reappointment, and you also did receive two other applications, Craig Kimball and Scott Measlin, for consideration.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say something. I was looking at these, and one of the things that, you know, I think this council has really strived to do is get people in the community involved. I looked at these names, and Craig Kimball does not sit on any boards at the present time, so he's not involved in the community at all. Scott Measlin, so I think, you know, if you got him on the board, you got somebody new. Scott Measlin also applied for some other spots where there are vacancies. We could throw him in there on the vacancy. And Bob Marty actually sits on another board, so he's involved in the community whether he's there on planning zoning or not. So you could actually have all five of these people involved in the city, rather than just reappoint people. Or we could reappoint either way. They haven't done anything that, in my knowledge, has, you know, been outside their means or degraded the city, but I'm just looking at it from the point of view of getting people involved in the community. I don't know what everybody else's thoughts on that are, but it's that.
So what is your recommendation?
So I would say to, I would recommend to appoint Craig Kimball, Ralph Mika, and Kyle Cone to the three vacant seats.
Are you making that a motion?
I'll make it, yes.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the land clearance redevelopment authority. Again, this is a council appointment. Typically, the mayor has been on this. Ron has served on this. His term expires, actually was at the end of May, and he has expressed interest to be reappointment, and no one else has.
I move re-reappoint Ron Lash.
Second.
Lash?
I was about to say.
William?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Okay, the Mexico Tourism Commission. We've had a, the local hotel motel industry representative actually resign her position, so therefore, she had to remove from the board as well. We do have two openings on this board. One does require that the applicant be involved in tourism activities. The other appointment requires the applicant to be involved in the local hotel motel industry. You've had two we received applications for, neither of which are considered to be in the local motel hotel industry here in town. So in either case, either one of these then could fill the position of the tourism activities, but could not fill the position of the local hotel motel. So we would... So, we would, so this would be for a three-year term, so...
Are, are bed and breakfasts not considered hotel motel?
They are not, because they are governed by different regulations, and they do not, we do not collect hotel motel tax on those.
Does that say...
You just blew, you just blew my plan out of the water there, you know that, right? I was like, Scott Measlin, I was like, two, two.
Do you know, Lou, if it says specifically in the statute, that they have to be in, in the city?
Says they have to be representative of the hotel hotel industry in the community that collects the tax. So the applicant is from kingdoms, is in the motel business, a kingdom city even though he lives in Mexico, so that's the problem. Sorry.
I was for sure the bed and breakfast was going in.
And the bed and breakfast, the bed and breakfast, bed and breakfasts don't collect the tax, they're not subject to the tax.
It makes sense, I just didn't think of it.
Yeah, sorry.
So what you're saying is that...
You have two people for one spot.
All right. I move to appoint Janine Vogel to the Mexico Tourism Commission.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is the building code board of appeals. If you remember, this is a new board, that was just established this year. This board is by council appointment, and we did set this up, that individuals need to work and/or have training, experience in the different professions. You actually have five people, to fill this board, you only have two applicants at this point, William Hossi and Michael Vogel. Looking at Michael's application, he is a certified electrician, licensed electrician, so he could fill that electrical position on the board, and Mr. Hossi could fill the layperson position if he so chose.
Do they have to be currently licensed, or no?
We, as we put it to, initially, we said individuals that have training or work experience in one of those areas, so that they at least had a background in it.
Okay.
What would be the point of appointing two people to a five-member board that couldn't be?
Well, we're going to have to continue to recruit to get the three other members. Now, if you wish to wait and appoint them all at the same time, that's your choice.
I would say that would be the thing to do.
Yeah, I would too.
Okay.
With the collecting.
All right. The next one is the Mexico Housing Authority. This is actually by mayor's recommendation, approved by council. Dale Dowell's term is, is expired at the end of June. If you remember, Dale was appointed to fill an unexpired term, has been there for about six months on, on this board, and he has interest in reappointment, but you also received another application as well from Tina...
Rubio.
Rubio?
Same here. I think that we should probably go ahead and keep Dale on, since he has only been there for a short period of time, so my recommendation would be to appoint Dale Dow to a new term.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox? Yes.
Okay. The Mexico Park Board, there are three terms expiring here, expired at the end of June, which was positions held by Robin Lightfoot, Carl Burkhead, and Gene Owens. Mr. Burkhead and Mr. Owen have expressed interest in reappointment, and we did receive other applications. This is an appointment based off of city manager recommendation, and I'd recommend to you that we appoint Carl Burkhead, Gene Owen, and appoint Adam Henderson.
I'll second that.
Need the motion?
I, I will make the motion, then I'll second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The zoning board of adjustment, Carl Roberts' term expires, expired at the end of June, he is interested in reappointment. We also have two other openings on this board. I did speak with other individuals today, Tina Rubio and Scott Measlin, and both agreed that they would consider it, appointment also to this. Now, I would point out that the, these two individuals are engaged to be married, and so, once that would happen, I, I don't know if there's any rule saying they cannot be a husband and wife, but I think that would be something that should be considered, but they would be filling an unexpired term, which would expire at the time of that wedding, so that could be reconsidered at that time, so...
What? Is it more important we get married, or do you want to stay on that board?
So, the term that they'd be appointed to would expire at the time of their wedding.
And I'm going to give you a big heads up, because you got me, you got me out of jam there with Scott Measlin, I was like, oh man, I'm just, there you go.
So, based on that, counsel, I would recommend the appointment of Carl Roberts, Tina Robo, and Scott Measlin to the zoning board of adjustment.
I will make a motion to appoint Carl Roberts, Tina Rubio, and Scott Measlin to the zoning board of adjustment.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Next, I think that's all of those, if I'm correct, and I, next we have the claims.
Your Honor, I move to declare the claims.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
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 Okay. Counsel comments. Counsel in the box.
I just want to say, I like the awning out front, and the improvements that are being done in here look really nice.
I'll second that, and I'll say, the 4th of July, I'm going to give some credit to public safety, because I did not hear my whole entire street blowing up till 3:00 in the morning, so I appreciate that.
We did too.
So good job with that, and this last week's been very, or last week was very interesting, I got to sit in and the comprehensive plan people, and I think whoever they, we end up choosing, I think we're going to be in good hands. So, that, I will pass it along.
I don't believe I have any comments.
Your Honor, the only thing I would have is to note that the asphalt contractor was in town working today, and you may have noticed some of the streets getting worked on, and I think they pretty much completed the work today, is that right, Kenzie?
The overlay was done, I think there's still cleanup that needs to be done, but all the asphalt did get laid.
So, and then the microseal is going to start in another couple of weeks?
End of July, first part of August.
My first wave of the construction's done.
Okay. I, I had a question about the hotel lot on Liberty and Agricultural there that we talked about the other day, that junk, I know some of the junk is gone, but there's a trailer sitting there, and there's junk on the other side of the trailer.
Right. To give you a little background, and then I will let Rita talk about this as well. The, the lot was allowed to, if you're, well, as the spring started, there was a vegetable flower shop retail outlet there that they, that they had, and the remnants of that, they had actually closed down for the season or whatever, would have been a week ago, Sunday, and, and there was a mess. And they were basically instructed to do cleanup, and they've done some of it, but it's not complete at this point, and I know Rita's been out and spoke with them, and spoke to the owner of the property as well, so I will also let Rita make any comments and status of where that's at.
The only additional comment is that we have spoken to both owners of the flower shop, or wherever it was, we have indicated they do need, they have $48 to get the rest of the equipment off of the lot, and we also contacted the owner today of that lot, and indicated to her the document that she held, that that lot would not be utilized for elaborated vehicles and junk, and so she is working with me to get that taken care of. They actually received several eye lighters today, we have been calling them on several occasions. They have made some progress, but they're not there yet.
It's a lot for sale?
The lot is for sale, but they haven't told us yet. I do know that we do have, we're working with some of the other surrounding property owners, and we do have signed demolition agreements on some of the other properties within that area to give them mileage, so hopefully once it's all over and out, we'll be in a better opportunity to sell it.
Just like to mention that Presser Hall had an event yesterday afternoon, and I don't, some of you may have noticed, it was a Rat Pack was in town, some, but anyway, there was a couple that drove all the way from Old Fallon, Missouri, to the Presser Hall event, and told me that they found out about this through our Missouri Life advertisement, so, some people actually read that, so, I thought that, found that quite interesting, so. Public comments. Seeing none, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
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 Did you see where they want us to put $10,000 dollars next year?